All right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our June 10th, 2025 Borough Council meeting. It is seven o'clock. Tonight, we are conducting our monthly Borough Council meeting, both in person and virtually utilizing the Zoom platform. We're glad that you've joined us here for this meeting. During the public participation and public hearings proportions of tonight's agenda, community members joining us via Zoom may raise their hand digitally. A member of our staff will unmute your microphone, announce your name, and then you'll be able to make comment to Borough Council and in the public here. We'll start with members of the public who are joining us here in Borough Council chambers. We do ask that you step up to the podium, sign in with your name and address for the minutes. We'll then go to those joining us remotely for public comment. We'll have two public comment periods tonight, one towards the beginning, one towards the end. We do ask that public participation be limited to once per a public participation session and that you keep your comments to three minutes or less. So with that, thank you again for joining us, and we will now begin our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance and Moment of Silence. Start with our roll call. Mr. Crack.
Ms. Berkley.
Present.
Mr. Camonito.
Present.
Ms. Dugan. Mr. Kirchner.
Here.
Mr. Moore.
Here.
Mr. Strainfeld.
Here.
Mr. Weiss.
Present.
Mr. Ewald.
Here.
Mayor.
Here.
Manager, Assistant Chief, Solicitor here, you have a call. Thank you. With that, we'll start our first round of public comment. So any members of the public here who are joining us here in council chambers, if you want to make your way up to the podium, there's a sign in sheet for your name and address that helps with our minutes. And then when you make a comment to council, if you can just start by introducing yourself and whether you're a resident or business owner here in the borough. So any of the members of the public wishing to make any general public comment? And then those joining us on Zoom, if you want to raise your hand digitally, once we've worked through anybody here in council chambers, we will move to those joining us on Zoom. Okay, perfect. If you want, just remind us of your name.
I live in Valley Forge. My name is Barb Cohen, but I feel like part of me is at home in Phoenixville, too, because I've been involved here for a very long time. I'm president of the Schuylkill River Heritage Center, and we have worked very hard over very many years to do many things that benefit the Phoenixville community. Obviously, with Petco, we saved the Foundry Building and also the mural at Renaissance Park. And we take care of it very, very thoroughly always. And at the Heritage Center, we have many different programs that are evening events. We're open to the public. We live on our membership. And what makes me feel so good as a former teacher, we have second and fourth graders come all the time to experience what we offer in terms of the history of not just Phoenixville, but the Schuylkill River in its entirety. I don't know if you hold the whole, know the whole story, but we received a free bridge back in 2002. And none of the developers wanted to use it to cross the French Creek. So the, this was Petco. We sold it to the borough for a dollar, and you all sold it back to us for a dollar. And now Gern Yeager Specialty Metals created the bridge sculpture that is there in Renaissance Park for everyone to enjoy. And Alan Cohen was kind enough to drive me to almost New York City in, in 2001, before that bridge that was created here was decommissioned. And both Sue Marshall from the Historical Society and achieved grant award to have signage. I don't know if you're aware, but somebody had given me his great uncle's pictures taken in 1911. And so all along the perimeter trail of the Riverworks Apartments, there are signs that tell the story of the Steel Company property. And what we found out that George Ferris had come here in 1891 to have the Phoenix Bridge Company create his wheel for the Chicago World's Fair in 1893. They were too busy building bridges. And of course, what was most popular, George Ferris's wheel in that year. Two years later, there was a recession in 1895, and the Phoenix Bridge Company was getting competition from what came US Steel out of Pittsburgh. They made four wheels. Three of them are gone, the one for Coney Island, the one for Isle of Pines, and the one for the Atlanta Cotton Exposition. The fourth one, the Asbury Park Wheel, Phoenix Wheel, not Ferris Wheel, actually operated from 1895 to 1988. It was sold to Biloxi, Mississippi Amusements, stood and worked there till 1998. And a gentleman named William Sitar, don't ask me, I saved the lady's name from the New Jersey Historic Commission, but she gave me his phone number in 2008. I called and we visited and they had not, even though it had been lying there for 10 years, it was never used to reinvent the waterfront at Asbury Park. With the help of Representative Carol Ruble and Senator Jim Gerlock and other donors, we were able to purchase the Phoenix Wheel. And it was brought to Phoenixville by courtesy from the Phoenixville Federal Bank and Trust. We have restored all the baskets. And we thought it was going to go together and be situated at the top of the hill across the street from the Foundry where our museum is located. Unfortunately, that did not happen. I won't go into the details. But we are very thankful that we're able to have a place now. Thanks, thanks to Jean and working with Borough to, we have that 30-year loan agreement for the wheel. And we are going to restore it as a sculpture that will be a piece of heritage tourism adjacent to the French Creek Trail. I was happy to volunteer to write the grant application narrative and work with Jean and Jen Logan and get it to where it needed to go. And I'm hopeful that you will move forward with us tonight so that we can have the wheel completed before June of 2026. As you all know, in order for the borough to receive the money that was awarded, they have to spend money and then receive the money shown that was spent. So I look forward to working with you. We have been in operation at the Heritage Center since 2008. We have a strong community commitment in many, many ways. And I feel that a lot of what was done by using history in a way that's unique and special, by taking that ugly corner that had weeds in 1993 and getting a grant from the National Endowment for the Arts and with the Masters in Design, I got Michael Webb, who is one of my art professors at Drexel, who had done very famous murals. In case you never knew this, Sam LaRosa, the owner of the Colonial Theater, was going to sell it to the store owner of Godavage Drapery. He was going to use that building as a storage facility for fabric. But because of the mural, he decided to sell it to Petco. And we made a point of restoring it. I got a $90,000 grant from Chester County and a new roof, a new doors and windows. And then we handed it off to the Association for the Colonial Theater in 1998. And of course, it's been a wonderful, successful historic asset to the community. And as the, as the Foundry has become, as the mural has become, as the Colonial Theater has become, Phoenixville isn't just a place. It's a place that tells the story about many people. And I look at the painting that we have, didn't have room for the Foundry, so it's a permanent loan to you here. It didn't matter where you came from, what color you were, where you went to pray. Everyone could get a job at the mill. And that is the story of what David Reeves did in working with to not send former slaves on across to Northtown or North West Canada. No, what he did was to give them all jobs at the Phoenix Iron Company. And they mined hematite. Two women sisters owned a large 500-acre farm in East Piclin. And they, they took care of getting the hematite out of the ground. And then they all got jobs at the Phoenix Iron Company. Phoenixville's legacy is extraordinary. And I work very hard with our board members and our members to make sure that even the public, and even if they're second graders from the elementary school in Phoenixville, or fourth graders, or the 11th graders that we just had from the Phoenixville Renaissance Academy, we very much want to work with you in a positive way to restore the wheel and install it adjacent to the French Creek Trail. So I don't want to take too long, and you all know what we have been doing. Thank you for your courtesy and hopefully your vote in approving what's on the agenda this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Cohen.
Good evening. My name is Josh Gould. This is a test to see if I can say my name and write my name at the same time.
You're a little bit taller than the last speaker, if you don't mind just lifting that microphone up a little bit. Thanks, Josh.
Okay, I'm a resident of the north side on Dayton Street, also a member of your planning commission and also volunteer at various organizations around town, including the Historical Society of the Phoenixville area. So it's appropriate to follow Barbara's comments by putting that hat on and reminding everybody that this Saturday, the Historical Society is holding the grand reopening of our newly renovated museum in conjunction with our Strawberry Festival. I'm hoping that everybody who can hear me will take the time to come by and enjoy the Strawberry Festival, which will have games and food and flea market, and come see the, the beautiful new museum that captures a lot of the history that Barbara just spoke to. So appreciate everybody coming. If you're not able to come this Saturday, the Historical Society is open every Wednesday and Friday from nine to three. Thank you.
Thanks, Josh.
Hi, everybody. I'm Christian DeWolff, 446 Grant Street. It's wonderful to see you guys here and, and dream together. I'm honored that I'm, I'm one of the founding board members of the Schuylkill River Heritage Center also. And it's been an amazing journey with Barbara's dream that when we had our board meeting, like you guys have board meetings, it went back and forth. When we're going to spend $50,000 on this pile of steel sitting in a bunch of weeds, it was one of those crazy, insane ideas. But amazingly, it passed literally by one vote. I'd like to say it was mine, and I think it was, but I'm not sure because that was a long time ago. In fact, that was, as I was walking in here tonight, I saw that the date that this building was built was 2013. The date that the Heritage Center started was in 2008, and that's around the time that we had this crazy idea to buy this wheel. So I'd just like to speak tonight on thanks to all of you for getting it to this point and to create an amazing dream that we all have. Never give up on a dream before it just might come true. And literally this project here, as, as many of you know, we thought it was dead in the water many, many times from, from where to put it, to have a home to put it. And where it's ended up is actually no better place to be there, a trailhead there on the French Creek Trail, which has been talked about almost as long as I've been alive, which is 58 years, but it's actually real. It's actually all coming to be. And what a better place to have it than right here on the French Creek Trail, right next to Borough Hall as a focal point for the whole community to look at. And the thing that will truly make it happen is because nothing happens until there's a deadline, and nothing happens until the deadline. And we actually all have a real deadline as to when we need to make it happen based upon the grant that became a reality based upon everybody coming together. So I just want to thank all of you for believing in this dream. I'm still amazed that it's actually going to come true. And let's continue to make sure that it happens. And thank you so much.
Thanks, Chris. Seeing nobody else in the room at the moment, we'll switch over to the Zoom platform for any other public comment remotely.
Mike K. Jack, I've turned on your microphone.
Hello, Mike K. Jack, parcel ID number 15-9-91.1. Also a board member of the Schuylkill River Heritage Center. It's wild to know that we are on the cusp of erecting the oldest Phoenix Wheel and Ferris Wheel as it predates the Ferris Patent. So it's actually known as the Phoenix Wheel to be re-erected in the town that it was initially created back in.
We can't hear you. Can you check your, your end?
Can you hear me? Hello? I'm, I'm unmuted. Hello? Can you hear me now?
Do you want to see if Dale can, Dale, can you chime in and just make sure that we can hear you? You're a good test subject here.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me?
Uh, we can't hear Dale. Mike, hold on just a moment. We're just checking our microphones.
Mike, talk to your phone here?
Yep.
Hold on. Tell him once, one second. I just got to see something.
Test. Am I unmuted now?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
I can.
I'm not sure why they can't hear us, though.
Are you also remote, like?
Yes, I'm also remote.
Yeah, for some reason I can see you as well. Interesting. Should I call Christian back and tell him that, uh?
I'm not sure what she's doing.
Would you, were you able to tell if she could hear you?
They were not able to hear me. He, he asked me to say something and they couldn't hear me.
Another person that's remote said that they could hear me. So it seems like the people who are remote can hear each other.
Right now, Dale.
Can you hear me now?
Or me? Mike K. Jack, test, test.
I wonder. Are you able to hear me now?
Dale, I can hear you, but.
Yeah.
I think it's because you're, you're, you're being shared as like a viewpoint.
There's only so many choices for the room speakers.
Like, for some reason, normally would just be showing Phoenixville Borough. It doesn't typically show an additional person.
Yeah, I'm a presenter. I'm presenting the financial statement, the audit summary.
Gotcha. Maybe that's something that's the errors that you, they have you as a, like a shared host. It's interesting. I'm getting a lot of people messaging me saying they can hear me, but just council can't hear me.
Got it.
Am I in?
It was just a moment. Yeah, it was just a moment here, Mike.
All right.
You're, you're good to go, Mike. We can hear you.
Awesome. Thank you. So Mike K. Jack, parcel ID number 15-9-91.1, also a board member of the Schuylkill River Heritage Center. I just want to share that I'm really excited that we finally have sourced the funds, the relationship with you, the borough, and the state to get the grant funding that we needed to really bring this over the threshold. The extensive work from Remington Versick Engineers, specifically Owen Hind and his dedication to seeing this wheel come to fruition has been phenomenal. Thank you to Jean Crack. Thank you to Doug Darlington, obviously Barbara Cohen, the other board members of the Schuylkill River Heritage Center. It's pretty wild to know that this project that's been frankly stagnant for about a decade now is seeing its future. And the initial direction and advice by Jean of putting it at 381 Bridge Street was, was a unique one, but in the same, I saw the future then. And knowing that Jean was offering that direction and we had the support of council was uplifting. It, it gave us a future. It gave us a home for the wheel. And frankly, it is the oldest wheel predating the Ferris Patent. And knowing that we will bring this to, to Phoenixville again, where it was initially brought in, I think it was 1895. And the stories, if those baskets could share with us, would be phenomenal. But I just want to thank you, the council, Eugene Crack, and other board members of the Schuylkill River Heritage Center that we really appreciate your help, your transparency and your involvement here, and I hope that this project is met with all approvals. In the event that the former Gott Walls Lumber and Coal Shed is available to be relocated, and that would be something that would be a struggle of hard to approve the demolition, I would like to sponsor that relocation and restoration of that shed as well. So I hope that the future of this wheel continues the direction we have and that we get Gern Yeager of Specialty Metals to get this wheel up and running for us. So I thank you for your time and I thank you for all your efforts.
Thank you, Mike.
I wasn't going to get up. You need me like a hole in the head, but I want to share something. My name is Jan Swar. And I work at the Foundry as a tour guide. And we've been telling everybody when we have this, it's going to be our Rocky statue. It's going to put us on the map. But I want to share something with you. I wasn't going to get up, but last week Barbara was at the museum. I was actually on the site. Jean, I did not know, Mr. Crack, I feel bad calling you Jean, but Mr. Crack, that it was that you were the one who wanted to have it there. When you're standing on the ground where this structure is going to be, first of all, it's 70 feet high and you see it above the sky, you realize everyone who comes into Phoenixville is going to see this and it's going to be up against the sky. And I was the guy that unwrote the ducks Philadelphia, and you know, the Ben Franklin Bridge is called Benjamin Franklin Blue. It's not in the Sherwin-Williams color chart, but, and that's because it merges with the sky, but this is red, so it's going to stand out like mad. But here's what happened. And a lot of these kids are, well, I'm on tape. I shouldn't say this, but they're juniors in high school and some of them didn't know who Bruce Springsteen was. And this actually, this wheel was on the second to last of Bruce Springsteen's album. It's a picture of him sitting there and the wheel is in the background, but here's what happened. I kid you not. I wish you had been there. The kids got down. They got down and they knelt on the ground. And they touched the ground like it was sacred ground. I kid you not. I, I'd like you to know that. It was amazing. I was shocked. I was shocked. So it's going to have a lot of meaning to people and especially our young people. Even if they don't remember the boss right now, they remember history and they were all excited. And that was great. They actually touched it like it was hallowed ground. That's all.
Thank you, Jan. Okay, seeing no other hands raised on our Zoom platform and nobody else approaching the platform or the podium, sorry. We'll move, we'll close the first round of public comment. There is another round of public comment towards the end of the agenda. If you missed your chance at this one, with that, we'll move into presentations. Tonight, we tee this off with our 2024 audit presentation with Dale.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
We can.
Perfect. So this year I came up with something a little different rather than just bookmarking my way through the financial statements. So we're going to do the presentation of the annual audit for the year ended December 31st, 2024. The first thing I have here are key financial statement items that I pulled from the financial statements. These are broken down between the governmental activities and the business type activities. The business type activities is the water, sewer, parking and sanitation funds. And the governmental activities is all other borough operations. For 2024, the governmental activities had cash of $21,164,905, receivables of $1,986,957, capital assets net of accumulated depreciation of $44,738,800, a net pension asset related to the police employee pension plan of $435,850, unearned revenue related to the ARPA funds of $850,894, long-term debt related to bonds and notes payable of $18,971,700, a net pension liability relating to the non-uniform pension plan of $220,0270, and an OPEB liability of $1,572,808. The 2023 numbers are also presented for comparative purposes. On the business type activities, we had cash of $15,419,18, receivables of $1,788,25, capital assets net of accumulated depreciation of $38,732,420, no portion of the net pension asset, $2,088 of unearned revenue, $1,828,300 of long-term debt, net pension liability related to the non-uniform plan of $78,158, and OPEB liability of $286,046. Again, 23, 2023 numbers also presented for comparative purposes. The next schedule shows net position for the last five years. So in 2020, on the governmental activities, we had $26,619,422. That has grown to $42,239,477 in 2024. The business type activities had $41,753,923 in 2020. And over the last five years, it has grown to $53,956,897. I'll point out, and then in 2023, we had a restatement related to the unearned revenue previously reported in the prior year. So that's why we have a change in the net position for 2023. The business type activities, there was no change. The numbers stayed the same for both years. The next schedule shows the changes in net position. For 2024, we had total revenues on the governmental activities of $19,958,068, total expenses of $16,288,456, giving us a net change before transfers and other items of $3,669,611, added to transfers in of $17,378, gave us a positive change in net position for the year of $3,686,989. On the business type activities, we had total revenues of $12,549,929, total expenses of $10,319,01, giving us a net change before transfers and other items of $2,238,028. Factor in the transfer out of $17,378 gives us a positive change for the year of $2,220,650. The next schedule is the general fund budget versus. The next schedule is the general fund budget versus actual, the general fund being the borough's main operating fund. Total revenue budgeted eleven million, eight seventy-nine, nine ninety-one. The actual came in at fourteen million, eight fifty-one, one twenty-three. Giving us a positive budget variance of two million, nine hundred seventy-one thousand, one thirty-two. Total expenditures budgeted at eleven million, nine seventy-two, one forty-five. The actual was twelve million, eight sixty-one, oh fifty-eight. Giving us a unfavorable budget variance of eight hundred eighty-eight thousand, nine thirteen. We budgeted for one million, two eighty-one, three ninety-one of other financing uses. They came in at a million, ninety-nine thousand, nine eighty-one, giving us a positive budget variance of one hundred eighty-one thousand, four ten. Giving, and that all adds up to a positive budget variance for the year of two million, two sixty-three, six twenty-nine. This is the breakdown between the governmental fund balances. It's broken down between the five categories. Non-spendable is is made up of prepaid expenses. The restricted amounts are made up of infrastructure amounts related to improvements for roads, bridges, parks and trails, among other things. The amounts that are committed are committed for OPEB fire protection and recreation. And the amounts that are assigned are assigned for debt service and pensions. The remaining amount is unassigned, giving us total fund balance for the year of nineteen million, five ninety-three, five oh two. Now I'm going to go over the required communications with Borough Council. This is typically in the letter that we sent after the audit is completed. I'm required to inform you that the objective of our audit is to plan and perform the audit to obtain reasonable assurance about whether the financial statements are free of material misstatement. The key words there being reasonable assurance. The audit was conducted in accordance with U.S. generally accepted auditing standards. And we had an unmodified clean opinion with an emphasis of a matter to restate a reflect correction of the prior year reported amounts related to the unearned revenue. Significant accounting policies disclosed in the notes. There are no said transactions that were lacking authoritative guidance. We adopted two new Gatsby standards in the current year. Gatsby one hundred deals with corrections of errors and changes in reporting entity. And Gatsby one oh one deals with changes in reporting of compensated absences. Gatsby one oh one were the rules that we followed for the restatement of the current year. Gatsby one oh one did not have a material effect upon implementation with the borough. Our significant estimates are the fair value of pension investments, depreciation expense related to capital assets. Pension and OPEB liabilities and the related deferrals and the compensated absences liability. We had no difficulties or disagreements with management and the audit adjustments were posted by management. This is the end of my presentation. If there's any questions on it. I'll be happy to answer. Also, I previously distributed copies of the financial statement. So if there's any questions on those as well, I can answer those as well.
Thank you, Dale. Any questions from council pertaining to the presentation on the twenty twenty-four audit? Okay, thank you, Dale. Appreciate all the work from your team.
You're welcome. Have a great night.
With that, we will need a motion to accept the twenty twenty-four audit as presented.
So moved.
Motion by Miss Berkeley, second by Miss Dugan. Questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed. Motion carries eight zero. Now move on to section five of tonight's agenda, which is the consent agenda. Are there any items in tonight's consent agenda that any member of council wishes to remove for further discussion? Seeing none, one is council's pleasure for consent agenda.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Miss Berkeley, second by Mr. Weiss. Questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed. Motion carries eight zero. And we'll move on to section six, which is our communications and council participation. Any items that council wishes to bring up or communications from public?
We all know we had a very busy few days in the borough, so I just wanted to thank staff. There was a lot of coordination from Thursday, Friday to Saturday. Great place to be alive and live in Phoenixville, but great time for that, but thank you all for keeping it so coordinated. I know it was a lot of heavy lifting on the back end.
Absolutely. Between Thursday and Sunday even, I think pretty much every department was utilized, implemented and the teamwork of the borough team is astonishing. So I do appreciate all the work that every department puts into every event with the tens of thousands of visitors that came through borough limits in the last, you know, five days. So I do appreciate all the work that that went into implementing what everybody loves to see about the town, so. Okay, with that, move on to the mayor's report.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. Good evening, everyone. And thank you for those of you who are joining us here in person, those who are joining us virtually. I do just want to echo Ms. Berkeley and Mr. Ewald's comments and thank our incredible borough staff, our police department, fire, EMS and all of our borough departments for their extraordinary work. The last three days, the last week has really been an exceptional magnifying glass of the extraordinary work that our entire borough team does, especially Ms. Getz, Fried, Ms. Logan, Megan Strout and the entire team that makes that possible. The month of May was very exciting, not only the last week, but also we had our annual Dogwood Festival Parade. The Chamber of Commerce hosted a chamber breakfast to have some conversations around the Schuylkill River Pasture Rail Authority. Open Hearth, which is an incredible nonprofit in our community, helping with housing, had an extraordinary celebration. We want to give a special shout out to the VFW and the American Legion who helped to put on an extraordinary Memorial Day celebration and remembrance in the Reeves Park in Reeves Park. And so thank you to our VFW and our American Legion for that incredible day of remembrance. Congratulations goes out to all of our middle school and high school students from the Phoenixville area school district as well as Renaissance Academy who have either moved up or who have graduated. We wish you all the best and we hope that you have a very happy and safe summer. The Clydesdales were absolutely extraordinary for those of you who had the opportunity to see them. Thank you to also all of our residents. It is a lot, I'm sure, not only on the borough to undertake these events, but certainly as residents, we appreciate your flexibility and your kindness in welcoming so many extraordinary visitors. I think that it's easy to say the secret is out and people love what we do here in Phoenixville and they want to be able to come and visit us. So thank you for giving us that that space and allowing us to do these extraordinary events. Pride Fest on Saturday was another extraordinary event, even though the weather was a little iffy. We probably had record turnouts for that. And so thank you again to the borough staff, especially to all of our first responders to our police department who made that a great success. Upcoming, we have, of course, the Historical Society of the Phoenixville area is having their annual strawberry festival on the fourteenth. As Mr. Gould said, I hope that you will take an opportunity to go out and see that extraordinary event, plus the reopening of the museum. This coming Wednesday at the VFW, you can attend at six thirty PM a flag retirement ceremony. If anybody does have a flag at home that they'd like to retire, we'd like to thank the Boy Scout troop headed up by Mr. J.D. Malone, who actually has placed a flag drop-off box outside the Borough Hall, so you can properly retire the flag there. Also coming up, of course, we want to acknowledge on the nineteenth of June will be Juneteenth and the Borough Celebration will take place on the twenty-second, which is Sunday, Sunday twenty-second. That will be our Juneteenth celebration. And then before our next council meeting, of course, we will have our July fourth celebration, food trucks and fireworks, which will take place at our Recreation Center on July fifth. For more information and certainly to stay up to date on these and many other events, I would encourage you to follow all of the borough's social medias. Check out our borough website, join our borough mailing list and also check out Phoenixville First on all of their socials. Thank you so much, Mr. President, and thank you all for making this a great place to live.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. We'll move on to our next item in the agenda, which is appointments. This is one of the rare occasions where it appears we have a full slate of volunteers on all of our various boards, committees and commissions. However, there's always openings on the horizon. So any members of the public here in the borough that are interested in taking part on any of the various boards, committees or commissions, we do ask that you reach out to your councilperson. Happy to fill you in on any of the openings that are available, are coming up or in discuss the responsibilities of each position. That brings us to new business. We've, our first item, item A is to not accept the last RFP round for the Phoenixville Potable Reuse Feasibility Study. What is council's pleasure?
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to not accept proposals received for the Phoenixville Potable Reuse Feasibility Study.
Second.
Motion by Miss Berkeley, second by Mr. Moore. Questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed. Motion carries eight zero. Next up, we have a zoning hearing board application for two twenty-third Avenue requesting special exception approval to change the existing office use to a tattoo and piercing studio use to be heard at the June eighteenth, twenty twenty-five zoning hearing board. I believe our solicitor has a little bit of background that he can provide before emotion.
Sure. So this was, as council president said, a zoning hearing board application for two twenty-third Avenue. The current use is a non-conforming office use. So they have requested a special exception to change from the existing non-conforming use to the newly proposed non-conforming use. Changes from one non-conforming use to another non-conforming use is permitted where the proposed non-conforming use satisfies the elements of our zoning ordinance. And specifically for this application, proving that this use would be more appropriate for the neighborhood than the existing non-conforming use. I don't see anything unique about this beyond what the zoning hearing board typically sees.
Have we been provided background on the hours, days, you know, types of use or is?
We have not. That is typically the information that's provided at the zoning hearing board.
And locationally, this is right on, this is one block off of Gay Street, I believe, across from the Propio School and behind St. Anne's, is that?
I believe that's correct. We are not required to take any action on this item unless council believes that it would like to.
Microphone, Dana?
Sometimes I forget I'm not in a committee meeting. Is this even appropriate for the neighborhood and like, is it going to have like parking in the hour is going to be okay?
That is the exact question that the zoning hearing board needs to examine. And the applicant will have to put on testimony before the zoning hearing board to prove its case. And interested parties from the community are able to participate in that hearing and if they so desire, become parties to the matter and present evidence, whether in support or against it.
Okay, thank you.
Based on its location would, well. Scott, do you have more to present or?
No, I have nothing further.
Based on the the brief background that we have on this application, is council interested in sending representation to protect borough interests on this application? That's the question we're asking. Mr. Weiss?
Yes, Mr. President. I don't see any.
Would somebody like to make a motion then?
We don't, we don't need a motion on this. If someone sort of would like to make a motion, one way or the other, certainly entitled to, but there's this is an item for review and a motion is only required if council so chooses.
Seeing no action? Nope, there is no action. We do not have any slated public hearings, so we're moving on to section eleven of tonight's agenda, which is resolutions and ordinances. First up, we have a resolution acknowledging Randy Moran's fifteen years on the Tree Advisory Commission. We can have a motion.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution acknowledging Randall Moran for his fifteen years of service on the Tree Advisory Commission.
Motion by Miss Berkeley, second by Mr. Strenfeld. Questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed. Motion carries. I will just take a moment to read Resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-four into the borough record. The Borough of Phoenixville, Chester County, Pennsylvania, a resolution of gratitude for the public service of Randall Moran as a member of the Tree Advisory Commission for the Borough of Phoenixville, Chester County, Pennsylvania. Whereas Randall Moran served diligently and honorably as a member of the Tree Advisory Commission since April twenty-seventh, twenty-ten. And whereas Mr. Moran provided invaluable and dedicated service to the Phoenixville Tree Advisory Commission and Borough Council during that time. And whereas Borough Council wishes to express its most sincere gratitude and appreciation to Randy for all of his efforts and commitment to the borough in performing his dedicated responsibilities over the past fifteen years. Now therefore be it resolved by the Borough Council of the Borough of Phoenixville that Randall Moran is recognized and publicly acknowledged for his commitment and efforts in performing his duties and further does offer their best wishes in his future endeavors. So thank you, Randy. It's truly appreciated the work you've put in on the TAC. Takes us to item B. We do have a motion to adopt the ordinance for our regularly updated chapter fifteen motor vehicles. What is council's pleasure?
I'll make a motion to adopt an ordinance amendment to chapter fifteen motor vehicles.
Second. Motion by Miss Berkeley, second by Mr. Strenfeld. Questions on the advertised?
Yeah, I'm just gonna add that it was scheduled to be advertised by the Pottstown Mercury on May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five. It was also sent to the Pottstown Mercury and Chester County Law Library for public inspection on May fourteenth, twenty twenty-five.
If I may, Mr. President, I just want to add that this adds into the ordinance that the parking lot at the rec center is for the rec center only. And I see it when I go past there in the mornings. Seven o'clock, that lot's filled, the lot on Franklin Avenue is filled up. Contractors mostly in the building across the street, Franklin Commons, some employees there too, so. You know, they shouldn't be parking there and it will be good to see that that lot is used for its intended use. Thank you.
And there's no shortage of programs at the rec center, so the parking is needed. Appreciate the the comment. Any other questions on this motion?
I just, how would we? Will the police department develop a process for routinely enforcing this or, you know? How how will we make sure that once we put this in place that they, that they're forced? I assume we'll be putting signage up and things like that.
To the fault of their parking or police?
There'll be signage and I'll work with Melissa Gibbons and we'll come up with a process and then there they also, they can call us anytime and begin to force it as well. But and I notice the other thing that's being added was is actually the parks. All of the park, parking lots are to be. And have we been having any situation where people are parking overnight or trying to?
We have several parks that are are being used for private, private vehicle storage.
Okay.
Twenty-four seven.
That would be great if we could really kind of enforce this, because I think it's important to, when we adopt things like this, that we create the presence and they understand. You can't do this anymore, you know? I appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Any other questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed. Motion carries eight zero and is adopted. Move on to reports of committees, boards and commissions. We start with Ms. Dugan and Harb.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve the certificate of appropriateness for the demolition of existing shed and adding hardscaping at three eighty-one Bridge Street.
Second.
And the reason that I voted against this was only to bring it to the attention of council so that everybody, since it's going to be on the agenda later and we have a crowd that was interested in it too. I thought like the steps we're taking would be appropriate to share with everyone.
Absolutely. We have a motion in a second. Are there any questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed. Motion carries eight zero. Anything else out of Harp time, Ms. Dugan?
No.
Thank you. Mr. Moore, Planning Commission. Microphone. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Planning Commission meeting that was scheduled for this week is canceled because there is no business in front of the Planning Commission. So the next meeting we will have is currently scheduled for Thursday, July tenth at six PM.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Mr. Kirkman with Regional Planning.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was not able to attend the last Regional Planning Committee meeting because attend the last Regional Planning Committee meeting because I could not get my Zoom to work, which is kind of like the equivalent of the dog ate my homework. But I do have news from the Regional Planning Committee. They, we, they, I should say, did a consistency review of a development in Charlestown White Horse Residential Townhouses and Apartments. Three hundred eighty-nine townhouses or two hundred fifty-seven townhouses plus two hundred five apartments at the intersection of White Horse and Moore Hall Road, otherwise known as Route twenty-three in the southern end of Charlestown Township near, where sort of Charlestown, Tridifferent and East Whiteland come together there. Generally speaking, the, the regional plan found that this has a lot of issues to, that need to be addressed before it comes into compliance and consistency with the regional plan. So I, I don't know what the outcome of that will be, but stay tuned. Because this is, it, it's really a substantial development in the region.
White Horse and twenty-nine.
White Horse and twenty-nine in the southern end of Charlestown, southern part of Charlestown. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kirkman. We'll go back to Ms. Dugan with Rec Board.
Okay, first of all, we have got the food trucks and fireworks in, at the same time as family trivia night, we're doing that on July, Saturday, July fifth from five to nine. The, the trivia part is, you know, just a side thing to, to entertain people while they're scoping out where they're going to sit. Or, you know, maybe they're gonna be eating or there'll be a lot of fun things, it's gonna be a lot different this year than it's been before, so. Really hope to see everyone out there. We've got a yoga fundraiser at the Community Gardens on Saturday, June twenty-first from ten to eleven A M. Grandparents getting started by Safe Center on Saturday, July twenty-sixth from nine to twelve, nine-thirty to twelve-thirty. Fresh to you Chester County Food Bank Mobile Market. That's every Wednesday through November from ten A M. to noon, they've got great food. Youth summer programs. The unfortunately both the, the playground camp and the gingerbread house camp are already sold out, but we've still got Reeves Park Mini Camp on June ninth to the thirteenth, June twenty-third to the twenty-seventh and July seventh to the eleventh. Then we've got tennis camp and orange crush tournament, July seventh to the twenty-fifth. Young Rembrandts, several different ones of those two from June ninth to the thirteenth, July twenty-eighth to August first and then August eighteenth to the twenty-second. Snapology Roa Pets from June ninth to the thirteenth, Ninja Adventures on August fourth to the eighth. Then mountain bike camps with soul riders. There's three different levels, the new rider intermittent, immediate and going the distance and they have different dates in June and July. Then we've got science explorers, junior discoverers from July twenty-eighth to August first, take a dive from August fourth to the eighth and Wizarding World of Science, August eleventh to the fifteenth. Shining Nights Summer Chess Camp, August fourth to the seventh. Coed Flag Football Summer Camps from July twenty-eighth to August first. Youth Coed Basketball Summer Camp from August fourth to the eighth. Summer Tennis Camp with fundamentals of tennis, July, I'm sorry, that's June sixteenth to the nineteenth. FaceTime Theater Summer Camp, June twenty-eighth to August first. Skyhawk Sports Volleyball Camp, August eleventh to the fifteenth. Skyhawk Sports Beginner Golf Camp from August eighteenth to the twenty-second. Jump Start Sports Camp, August eleventh to the fifteenth and the next one from August eighteenth to the twenty-second. There is Sol and Skies Yoga Camp Weeks, pre-K to kindergarten on August twenty-fifth to twenty-ninth, elementary, August fourth to the eighth, eleventh to fourteenth, August eighteen to twenty-second. And tweens start in June, June ninth to the thirteenth, July twenty-eight to August fourth. And finally, the Junior Pickleball Camps, August fourth to the seventh and the eighteenth to the twenty-first. And that's all I have for tonight.
That's a full summer calendar, thank you, Ms. Dugan. Mr. Carmonito with Tree Advisory Commission.
Yes, Mr. President, first I'd like to start off with our disappointment that Randy Moran is stepping away from the Tree Advisory Commission after fifteen years, he's played a very big role in all the work we've done for the trees in the borough and improvement in our urban canopy. So we thank him and hope to still see him around and at our events. Other news, we are working through our tree planting list, maintaining our current list of tree removals that are recommended by Arbis and continuing to plan for our fall plantings. So our next meeting is July seventh at six P M.
Thank you, Mr. Carmonito. We'll move to Ms. Berkeley with Human Relations Commission.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of our H R C did move their meeting, so our usual meeting is the first Wednesday, but it will actually be tomorrow, the eleventh at the rec center. If anyone wishes to join it, it is a public meeting. In lieu of the meeting, since we had a couple conflicts, we, I wasn't able to attend for a work conflict, but we did have several members of our H R C attend a local meet and greet, so it was local H R Cs from varying municipalities getting together and sharing resources and ideas of how they can be inclusive and share resources among their communities. Although we were one of the first, there are now many neighbors that have joined us in developing an H R C, so it was nice to hear that those connections were being made.
Thank you. And we'll pivot right to council action referred from committees, which is leading off with personnel and public safety, Ms. Berkeley.
Right back to me, before I move forward with our motion, and there might be some discussion on that. I just want to echo what Mr. Carmonito said, I will also note that while we are sad to see someone step down after many years, we have lots of new energy and we were able to fill those roles very quickly. As you noted earlier, Mr. President, we have very few openings right now, but we always welcome people that want to get involved in committees and commissions. To do so, lately in our committee, we've had more and more applicants. And there's been a lot, even multiple applicants for one role, so that's been exciting to see so many people want to be engaged. And then with that, I will move forward with making a motion to authorize staff to submit an application for seven firefighters under the, under the staffing for adequate fire emergency response or safer grants.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Moore, questions on this item? Ms. Dugan.
Well, the only concern I have here is just we don't, to make sure that we don't have to hire all seven at the same time because we do have a plan already to get two a year. And we can budget that out and it works well without huge tax increases with that, so just to make sure that we can get these two and two and two, and I don't know what happens to the last one, but that I just want to make sure that's something that we can handle.
Absolutely, and we do have Fire Chief Presun is here tonight if if amen wants to step up and just clarify for I believe in the fourth year would be one grant person, one budgeted.
Good evening, everyone, thanks for the question, so the way it works, and I'll just read it right out of the guidelines. So when a safer program award is accepted, when does the period of performance start? Period of performance under the hiring activity is thirty-six months for all grant awards. A default one hundred and eighty-day recruitment period, which allows grant recipients to begin hiring safer program funded firefighters begins when FEMA approves the application for an award under this activity. The thirty-six month period of performance automatically starts after one hundred and eighty day recruitment period, regardless of whether the recipient had successfully hired or requested firefighters. So in addition to that, we can do a staggering of the hiring over the period. However, if, if we do it in that manner, we won't have the ability to take full advantage of the funding on the reimbursement, so for example, we said, hey, we're gonna do three next year and then do the, you know, one the following year. So it's, we're not starting separate grant periods, every increment that we're hiring folks under the grant program. The other thing to note with this, with the program, council person pointed out, doing two, two, two every year, maybe four regardless of the safer grant, if we didn't get it. We would not be looking for additional hires. So if we get the award, these are the positions, so we wouldn't be coming back to council essentially double dipping and say, oh, we got the safer grant, now we're gonna continue to hire those two additional people each year as well. So as I noted in the memo to manager crack, that I believe is in the packets, there would be, I'm very specific in there, to be no request for additional hiring if we are fortunate enough to get the safer grant. The other thing to point out here, we have applied for this grant the three years that I've been here. Quite frankly, was not gonna push this forward because the one thing that's missing the last three years is the match requirement. And that changed literally the year I started here, they decided because of different things going on, they were gonna remove, remove the match and that opened the floodgates to thousands of applicants that otherwise had no serious intention of, of doing it properly, where they're committed to a long-term plan like we are here in Phoenixville, flooded the gates. So really took our chances down dramatically. So the fact that they have reinstituted the match is why I brought this forward for the council's consideration. Doesn't really sob everything, but it definitely gives us a springboard with the plan to move it forward a little bit quicker. But a, as you all have done, I, I think a tremendous job of, you're investing in public safety. And I'm really looking at this as I talk to manager crack and the rest of the staff routinely. We're trying to leave no stone unturned here, we're obviously very sensitive to the taxpayers and folks sitting behind us that are supporting us, we're just trying to attack as many grants as we can as best as possible, soften the blow.
Additionally, since we, the plan is two each year and this has to be done in three years, we would only use six years of this or six people of it, would, what would we, would we be required to hire a seventh or does it count if we just get the six that we get to use a little bit, like more on the first two? Medium amount on the second two and then the smallest amount on the, the last two, but?
Yes, so the idea with the seven, with the plan, our ideas were scaling down the part-time element of this. I would still argue we do better than most places, but the part-time component for the firing MS services is not great. With the exception of probably one of our part, sixteen part-timers, everybody else is working a full-time job or two. So not that they don't care about the citizens of being part of what we're doing here. Overtime mandates of their full-time jobs, so trying to fill those gaps is very difficult. So the reason we ride the seven because it's safer is ultimately looking at a, as, as a, as a baseline, you know, they're looking at staffing as four people per fire truck. So you look our three, our current three platoon system, we have five positions filled within that system. So seven gets us to three platoons of four, twenty-four, seven as our baseline, so as we're looking at the pre-scoring, they're looking at, okay, is Phoenixville going to meet the standard? How many, how, what's the percentage, fifty, sixty, seventy, eighty, ninety, that's where we arrived at the seven.
Okay, my last concern about this at all is that you're, you're not going to ask us to add, it's still gonna be two a year that we're gonna be asking for, right? There's not gonna be like?
Yeah, if, if the safer is not successful, correct, yes.
Okay, all right.
Thank you, Chief, any other questions on this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries eight zero.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Ms. Berkeley, anything else out of P P S?
No, thank you, Mr. President.
Move to Mr. Moore with Parks and Rec.
Nothing further to discuss that wasn't covered by the consent agenda. Our next Parks and Recreation Committee meeting is Tuesday, July fifteenth.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. From there, we'll move to Mr. Carmonito with Policy.
Yes, Mr. President, first item under policy is, I'd like to make a motion to schedule and advertise an ordinance amendment to chapter thirteen, licenses, permits, general business regulations, part five.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Carmonito, second by Mr. Weiss, questions on this item? Mr. Moore?
I'd just like to offer my appreciation for the work by the Policy Committee. You had an opportunity to have me share my concerns when this, when the previous ordinances were brought forward. Really, I appreciate how the new approach focuses on public safety, traffic movement and so forth. And I think that greatly improves and it really answers all of the concerns I had around supervising content, which I did not think we needed to do and I clearly, so I appreciate it and I do support moving forward with this ordinance.
I just want to thank staff too, because they put a lot of work into listening to our feedback and the feedback from the public and coming back with something that everybody was happy with, thank you.
It's good collaboration between the Policy Committee and the busking community as they came out and were quite helpful. Appreciate that. Any other questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero, next up.
All right, next item, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to authorize staff to send an ordinance amendment to chapter twenty-seven zoning to the Borough Planning Commission, Chester County Planning Commission, the Phoenixville Regional Planning Committee for review and comments in accordance with municipal planning code upon completion by the borough solicitor of a legal review and revision thereof.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Carmonito, second by Mr. Moore. Question?
I'm just gonna give a quick explanation. So as everyone knows, our zoning task force has met for, I think, maybe two years at this point. And come up with some amendments to our overall zoning ordinance. I am now in the process of going through and doing a legal review, making sure that defined terms are used properly. Defined terms are capitalized, we don't have terms that are seemingly defined but without a definition, making sure there's no conflict in between provisions. That there's not unintended consequences of the changes we've made because of cross-reference with other sections and that type of thing, so. I expect to have that completed by the last week in June. At which point, with this motion, we intend to send it to the Planning Commissions for review. Mr. Moore noted that we expect to have a planning, Borough Planning Commission meeting in July. And our zoning ordinance with the legal review will be on that agenda. This will also come back to council next month for official scheduling and advertising. We, we don't officially schedule and advertise until we have the final, final form.
Thanks, Scott.
And a question, what, what's the, when does the, what is the clock for reviews and when does that clock start?
So the clock for reviews is forty-five days and that clock starts when we send the ordinance out. And that's part of the reason that we're asking for authorization to send it out before our next council meeting. Because we have deadlines that we need to meet, you know, for our zoning task force review.
Thank you.
Mr. Moore?
So it does not go, it does not go back to the zoning task force, it's next visit once we will receive comments from the three groups that it's being sent to. And will, will that basically be then addressed by you and staff? And then given to, to council to schedule and advertise? I'm trying to understand where the reaction of those three reviewing bodies is then incorporated into the actual zoning update.
To be honest, it depends on the reaction. The more significant the reaction, the more likely that we will need our planning consultants and the zoning task force to look at it again. To the extent that the comments are more minor and it's something that I can add without materially changing what the zoning task force has sought to achieve. That's something I can do without having a zoning task force meeting it, that's my hope. But, you know, like I said, we did, well, you were there, we spent two years on this, we had public meetings, we had public open house. But you, you never know what's gonna come up, so we'll kind of take the comments as they come.
It was helpful that two, two members of the Planning Commission were a part of the zoning task force, so, I mean, that will be helpful, but, you know. The, I know that the commission is very interested in understanding and going through it and, and it's, and it's a big piece of change, so, okay, thanks.
Okay, there's a motion in a second, any other questions from council on the procedure? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries eight zero, anything else out of policy tonight? Motion carries eight zero. Anything else out of policy tonight?
That's it. Our next meeting is June twenty-fourth, immediately following finance.
Perfect. Thank you, James. Moving on to Infrastructure, Technology, Transportation, and Sustainability Committee, Mr. Weiss.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Lots going on, as always, in the I T T S Committee. We're really proud to have moved forward. The Phoenix Wheel project for the vote that'll be coming later today and all the partnership throughout the council on moving that one forward. We're currently working on projects exploring solar panel installation and generation on our rec center and our fire station. And our next meeting is one week from tonight on the seventeenth at seven P M., and we love visitors. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss. With that, we'll move on to Finance Committee with Ms. Dugan.
I'd like to make a motion to award the Phoenix Wheel contract to Special Metals Welding and Fabrication Incorporated and Co-Stars Vendor in the amount of the base bid and alternate bid number two, alternate bid number three, and alternate bid number five, in the total amount of two million, one hundred ninety-three thousand, five hundred ninety-six dollars contingent upon funds being available and upon receiving authorization to award from all funding agencies.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Dugan, second by Mr. Weiss. Questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the R V E Change of Scope Number Two for the Phoenix Wheel Project in the additional amount of fifty-three thousand, three hundred and thirteen dollars.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Dugan, second by Ms. Berkeley. Questions on this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero.
Finally, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agreement substantially similar to the amended and restated outgoing loan agreement for the Phoenix Wheel with the Schuylkill River Heritage Center, as may be negotiated and revised and deemed reasonable by the Borough Solicitor, and further authorizing Council President, Manager, and Solicitor to execute such amended and restated agreement and take any other action necessary to enter into this amendment and satisfy the terms of the conditions thereof.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Dugan, second by Ms. Berkeley. Have a hunch as to who wrote that motion. Any questions on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries eight zero. Anything else out of finance time, Ms. Dugan?
No, that was all.
Thank you. With that, that concludes the substance of our agenda tonight. So we will open up our second and final round of public comments. Any members of the public wishing to make a comment to council tonight, please make your way to the podium. There is a sign-in sheet on the podium. We do ask for your name and address for the purpose of the minutes. And then any members of the public joining us on Zoom, if you'd like to raise your hand virtually, a member of our staff will work through that list and unmute and announce your name at the appropriate time. So Ms. Cohen, if you'd like to take the podium again? Absolutely.
Can I give everyone a hug?
Afterwards.
Thank you. Thank you all so much. It is, you know, my passion is history, and making history come alive again has been my goal for all these years, and I am so touched, and our museum board members who are here and working with you to make this come alive again as another historic community asset. I'm hoping that I can meet with the new Director of Planning for Chester County, and last year, they approved a heritage tourism plan. And when I think that the wheel that we all have is the oldest one in the world, we own it outright, we know how it's going to go together, and finally, with you, like you are, have displayed our painting all these years that we have shared with you, we'll be able to have people of all generations who are taking a walk on the trail, parking their car, be able to understand yet another piece of Phoenixville's extraordinary history. So thank you very much. Work to go forward, Gene. Thank you. And I want to give you a heads up, working hopefully with either, with Jen Logan to again have a real celebration this coming October tenth, not tenth, seventeenth, same timeframe as last year. So I know that Representative Councilman Weiss was there, and we appreciated that very, very much. Thank you. Let's all work hard to get it done. Thank you again for your positive vote and support.
Absolutely. Thank you, Ms. Cohen. Any other members of the public wishing to make a comment before we close out here? Seeing no hands raised on Zoom or lines at the podium, we will close the second and final round of public comment, which brings us to Communications, Council Participation, for any closing comments from council tonight. Ms. Berkeley.
I just want to say, I know we have a pretty big crowd. We don't always have that, so we welcome that, and thank you all for coming out. I'm sure the wheel was a big draw tonight, but there's lots else going on in the borough and in the world, so we certainly want to engage you and welcome you and make public comment, ask us questions after the meeting. We certainly welcome that, so thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from council? Seeing none, we do have all the staff reports for manager, police, fire, planning, public works, finance, human resources, and recreation in our packets. At the bottom of your agenda tonight is all of our upcoming meetings with the correlating times. And then, as we've done for the last few years, we like to just announce our employee service anniversaries as we discussed with the tens of thousands of people that came through the borough this last weekend alone. We can't do it without the dedication and hard work of the hundred and twenty-five employees that make the borough churn every day. So we'd just like to take a moment and recognize that we have a hundred and seventy-six years of service anniversaries this month alone to recognize. We have Dennis Himes, who's been in our Streets Department for thirty-five years. Everybody's favorite sergeant Bobby Sutton is celebrating twenty-eight years. Officer Frank Bryan has been with us for twenty years. Corporal Nick Ntau has been with us for seventeen years. Celebrating sixteen years together, we have David Bulker and Detective Tom, sorry, Detective Tom Highland, both at sixteen years. Chris Bungo has been with Water Distribution for eleven years. Joseph Ragazzino has been with Water for ten years. Frank Golisch has been the Borough Mechanic for the last nine years. We have Sean Casey in sanitation for the last eight years, Daniel Roskos as our Parks and Rec Labor for the last four years, and lastly, David Catalano as our sanitation driver for the last two years. So again, a hundred and seventy-six years of service just this month between those twelve employees. So we can't do it with the great staff that we've managed to put together to keep driving forward. So with that, we do not have a need for executive session tonight, so a motion to adjourn is needed.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Weiss. Questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries eight zero, and we are adjourned at eight twenty.